Good evening. I called to order this February 3rd meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and asked the City Secretary to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bessie.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio.
Mayor Protem Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Thank you very much. And would you please join the City Council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would you join the City Council and me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our Sergeant-at-Arms tonight is Lieutenant Horace Bryant. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. We have two honorariums as the first order of business. May we have item H1, please?
Item H1, Resolution Recognizing Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Phi Omega Chapter, Service to All Mankind Black History Month. Whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated was founded on January 15th, 1908, the first Greek letter sisterhood established and incorporated by African-American college women. The Phi Omega Chapter was chartered in Winston-Salem on February 14th, 1924, as the sorority's first graduate chapter in North Carolina. And whereas the chapter's five charter members were Adelaide Smith, Audrey Williams, Maude Young Gray, Mamie Williams, and Marguerite Adams. And whereas the Phi Omega Chapter currently has more than 160 members who work diligently to fulfill the sorority's commitment to be of service to all mankind through community service projects. During the spring, Phi Omega members collect gently used business attire, which they donate to Goodwill Industries' Success Outfitters Project. The chapter's Global Poverty Committee has donated vegetables from its community garden to seniors, churches, and food pantries in Winston-Salem. The chapter also prepared and served some of the produce from its garden at a community dinner held at Green Street United Methodist Church. And whereas the Phi Omega Chapter strives to prepare the younger generation by demonstrating the importance of education through action, from working in soup kitchens to conducting voter registration drives, Phi Omega continues to be of service to mankind with countless community initiatives 95 years after its chartering. The chapter tackles health and environmental concerns by participating at health fairs and planning in a community garden. They host an annual Christmas party at Bethlehem Center, which brings joy, food, and warm blankets to preschool-aged children in Winston-Salem. Phi Omega also prepares high school students for the next level of their education by hosting reading tutorials and SAT preparation classes, donating school supplies to low-income students, and awarding scholarship money to those in need. And whereas the Phi Omega Chapter of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated celebrates 95 highly-successful years of service due to the collaboration, support, and hard work of our past and current leaders and members, organizations such as this, which stand the test of time, are a direct result of phenomenal teamwork. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the City Council of the City of Winston-Salem do hereby congratulate the Phi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated on its 95th anniversary, express grateful appreciation to the chapter for its many years of active involvement in the community, and extend best wishes for the chapter's future, dated this 3rd day of February 2020.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion second. Any discussion? Now, there isn't. All those in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, and we can actually vote as well. I'm sure that's going to be unanimous. And Mayor Protem Burke, I believe, is going to present this resolution.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Do we have any Alpha Kappa Alpha who's to represent?
That's one there.
All right, you're representing. Okay, you can come up.
If you come up to the podium, please, ma'am.
All right, Sarah, Sarah Hattie, I'm glad you're here, my neighbor and my longtime friend.
Yes.
As well as my Sarah. I was thinking about 95 years ago, when women had so many things to do, but yet and still they were brave enough to organize Alpha Kappa Alpha in the city of Winston-Salem. Yes. We're so pleased that the Mayor and councilpeople, as well as the City Manager, are taking a strong leadership with our marker. And I don't know if it was stated or not, but we're one of the few women in this city who stepped out and said, let's become people involved with housing. So we've generated revenue back in this community with decent housing, affordable housing. And we've also been able to have a clubhouse where people can get to use, and it's a very nice facility. I was thinking when Ms. Keeney read the women who were the founders, two of those ladies, Ms. Williams and Ms. Adams, Ms. Adams taught me in Charlotte in the 8th grade, the subject family, how to budget and how to manage. And then I went on to Elizabeth City, and Ms. Williams was married to Mr. Williams, the president of Elizabeth City, and she set up the first charter chapter my sophomore year.
Okay.
You've had some great women in Winston-Salem who's been mentors for the women who grew to be fine women. So you might have told me the resolution.
So here, councilmember. Over to you.
Yes.
It is my pleasure to present to you this great resolution and to thank all of you for your work and your interest in young people to develop to be positive citizens.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I accept this on behalf of Phi Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. They will be very pleased to receive this honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May we have item H2?
Item H2, Resolution Recognizing the Effor Club of New Bethel Baptist Church in Celebration of Black History Month. Whereas the-
Oh, hold on. You're still talking.
You can just stay there if you like, save your trip. Let's do the resolution, then you can do it.
Whereas the Effor Club of New Bethel Baptist Church was organized on November 14th, 1924, by Ms. Anna Webster. The club name was chosen as an indicative of their determination to do everything possible to carry on the good works of the church. And whereas the Effor Club enhances the growth of the church and supports every major endeavor of the church, as well as scattered deeds of kindness in the community. And whereas the special project of the Effor Club has been the annual celebration of Race Progress Day, the creation of Mrs. Suzie Drayton, former First Lady. For this occasion, the club brings to Winston-Salem speakers, who are recognized as some of the strongest leaders in the United States, including educators, politicians, lecturers, and ministers. The Race Progress Promoter Program Award recipients are determined by their service to the city or county, demonstrate constructive concern for the welfare of all, their activity in the community and civic affairs, and who voice their concern regarding issues affecting the poor. And whereas the Effor Club celebrates 95 highly-successful years of service due to the hard work, collaboration, and support of our past and current presidents and members, organizations such as the Effor Club, which stand the test of time, are a direct result of phenomenal leadership. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the City Council of the City of Winston-Salem do hereby congratulate the Effor Club on its 95th anniversary and extend best wishes for the club's future, dated this 3rd day of February 2020.
Sure motion.
So moved.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That's unanimous. Councilmember Burke, if you'll make the presentations. There's someone here from the-
Effor-
There we go.
And with the ladies coming on with it. Probably the best. Hey, if you don't move, come back and get it. Oh, if you want me to get a picture. I had to protect the four of you. It is so wonderful to stop and salute and let women know, no matter what their duties and responsibilities, they took time to be so involved with their church. We're very fortunate in this city because when Reverend Drayton came here, a young Mohouse graduate, and at early age, was he 23 or something, I've heard him say, became the pastor of one of your prestigious church, New Bethel Baptist Church. And he brought with him his wife, a Spelman girl, who fitted in so well with the women at her church. Young girls admired her so much, she was strictly a high-class lady. And with her efforts, she developed who you all are today. So Mayor, members of this council, it is my pleasure to present this resolution to the women who spent 95 years making a difference for this city. Madam President, now, but the 95-year-old celebration was with Madam President Myers, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, where is Lisa?
That's her.
Lisa Myers.
That's her.
Okay. Well, why did you ask me that different church that I've seen before, and I say Lisa Myers?
I know you said Lisa Myers.
Why don't you correct me?
That's her.
Okay, 'cause you live off, you live off of that place. All right. Oh, Mr. Poe, who was the, up there, Charlie, Coach, okay? Well, I hear what y'all say, you know, going on. But I want to say it's such a pleasure. Would you like to make a comment, Ms. Myers?
Yes, I just, it's just indeed an honor and privilege for the Effor Club. And we, you know, try to strive and continue to make a difference in the community. So, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great day.
All right.
Great night. Thank you all.
Thank you all very much. Before we turn to our regular agenda, I think it would incumbent upon all of us to take just a moment and say how delighted we are with the reopening of Salem Parkway, former Business 40. And I think the City Council, I can speak for the City Council, I believe on this, to say we express our deep gratitude and thanks to Pat Ivy and Larry Shaver and all the members of the local DOT staff, as well as Flatiron Construction, for the tremendous job they did in getting it open about six months early. And so I think everybody's enjoyed riding on it a little bit and checking it out. So, thanks to everyone for that. Mayor, can I just? Councilmember McIntosh?
I would like also to thank the group that put the celebration on the other day.
Oh, thank you.
They worked really hard, and were given a very short period of time to react. They knew they were going to throw a big party, but they didn't know when it was going to be until literally a couple days before, but they did great work.
Good point, and also good creative corridors for the archways and the brick accent walls and all the work that's done there to really give Winston-Salem a great new front door. Tonight's agenda of the City Council is comprised of the following items. There are four rezoning petitions, two of which are continuing items. There's an item confirming the assessment role, and there are nine items related to appointments and reappointments for boards and commissions. The zoning petitions and the assessment role are listed for public hearings. When these public hearings are called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If there is opposition to the new zoning petitions, the proponents and opponents will each be given 15 minutes for presentations and three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, our close to public hearing and the council will consider the item. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed Tuesday at 9:00 a.m., again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course, copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings are always available online at the city's website, and just click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. May we have item Z1, please?
Item Z1, Continuation of Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of Perega Real Estate LTD. From HBS to PBL, property is located on the southwest corner of Walltown Street and East Sprague Street, located in the southeast ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition. This item was continued from the December 2nd, 2019, and the January 6th, 2020 City Council meeting.
Is there anyone in the council chairman who is opposed to this rezoning? Another petitioner is here, if there are any questions. Seeing no opposition, I declare the public hearing closed. I'd recognize Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, citizens. The rezoning request before you is the former Rite Aid building at the intersection of Sprague, Walltown, and Reynolds Park Road. Many of you know that Rite Aid was bought out by Walgreens, who subsequently moved to Southeast Plaza. So now we have a vacant building there that I think we've made a great deal of progress. So this rezoning request before us would change the zoning from highway business special use to pedestrian business limited, which permit a larger range of commercial and office uses. We really have a good developer lined up, who we won't say who it is just yet, but those who are in the southeast ward just know that we will contact you for ribbon cutting, and it's going to be somebody who we know that will help with the upward mobility and the upward vitality of the southeastern portion of the city. With that being said, Mayor, members of the council, I move for approval of one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W-3427.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Quick comment.
Councilmember Taylor.
We have some members of the southeast ward who came out in support of this particular petition. They were not opposed, so they did not speak, and I just want to recognize Mrs. Swinski and all the other folks who came out to be heard on this particular item.
Very good, thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item Z2?
Item Z2, Continuation of Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of Redeemer Presbyterian Church, from RS9 to IPS. Property is located on the southwest side of Miller Street, south of South Hawthorne Road, located in the southwest ward. This item was continued from the January 6th, 2020 City Council meeting.
I recognize Councilwoman Bessie. I know there's been a lot of work done on this and some revised conditions. So, Councilwoman Bessie?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I would propose, and I believe that I've checked with the parties, and this is satisfactory, is that Mr. King will summarize the proposed new conditions, which have been agreed to by the petitioners and which came out of discussion between myself, staff, petitioners, and concerned neighborhood representatives, after which we'll reopen the public hearing and allocate up to 10 minutes cumulative to each side for presentation and rebuttal, if that's satisfactory with my colleagues.
Objection to counsel, is that? No objection. All right, very good. Mr. King, would you summarize some changes?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and councilmembers.
Good evening.
We did brief this, discussed this at your last meeting. What has happened since then is through discussions, we have a revised site plan that's before you, and that's on the screen there. Functionally, it doesn't look much different than the one that was before you last month, but as you'll see in the margins, there were additional clarifying notes placed on this site plan. One is to clarify that the circulation is one-way from Miller Street back over to Melrose Street. That note was added. And secondly, concerning the two houses that front on Miller Street, there was a note placed on there for those houses to remain to clarify that issue. There was some concern about a poplar tree kind of in the central portion of the lot. There was a note placed to clarify that. And then last, there was a note placed on this site plan to clarify that the entrance from Miller Street back into the site will not be used as a drop-off for the daycare for the site. So those notes were added to the site plan itself. In addition, there were two other conditions that were volunteered by the applicant for this case, and I will spare you me reading every one of those words to you, but the long and the short of it are that basically conditions D and E, and they're in a revised permit that you have at your places. They really deal with reversion clauses that were placed on this site, the first one being if the property is sold, then the property that was only revert back to its original RS9 zoning. And then the second one, condition E there, relates to a question I believe that was asked at the previous meeting about the condition of these structures and how would they be maintained. Staff has worked very closely with the Attorney's Office to come up with some language that would, that would put some restrictions in place and give direction on how those properties would be maintained. It also includes a reversion clause in there as well. So those are the two new conditions that have been added to this case under other requirements.
Any questions, Mr. King? Thank you, Mr. King. Councilmember Cipio?
You said that the drop-off for the daycare would not be the new entrance?
Correct.
Or, so they go through the old entrance?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. This is a public hearing, and as proposed, we would modify our standard rules to say the proponents and opponents will each be given 10 minutes cumulative. For the proponents, Robert Alexander. Would please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Robert Alexander. I'm an elder at Redeemer Presbyterian Church, and I live at 2253 Westover Drive in Winston-Salem, 27103, just two blocks from the church. To start, I would like to clarify, too, that that drop-off is for Redeemer School. There's no daycare on the site, just clarification there. But I also would like to reiterate, the goal throughout this project is and continues to be the love of neighbor, for which, for us, translates to the continued stewardship and enhancement of the character and nature of Ardmore's residential community. First of all, we believe that this improvement will draw traffic and parking off Miller Street and its side streets, while enhancing safety for all vehicles by eliminating traffic, which is currently forced to exit onto Miller Street. Secondarily, the expanded public green space and park-like setting behind the residences on Miller Street will have improved access while preserving and showcasing these historic properties in Redeemer's care, which are part and parcel of Ardmore's historic zoning. Next, I would like to publicly declare my appreciation for Councilman Bessie's wise decision and leadership to postpone this hearing a month and to bring all parties together, including the leadership of the A&amp;A and even Ms. Magnus, to receive this proposal that is now before the council. We believe that all their concerns have been addressed, and we appreciate and respect the institutional posture of the A&amp;A, and are grateful for the continued non-adversarial interactions we have had with them over the past months, as well as the interactions we have had over the past five years with several iterations of their board, as this project has been moved along both inside and outside Redeemer Church. As I mentioned in last month's hearing, Redeemer has no plans to increase seating capacity on the Miller Street campus, and the church plans on continuing to grow by planting new churches, like the seven we have already helped to start in the Piedmont Triad over our 30-year history. This proposal also helps serve the aging community members and special needs individuals in our community that use the church building, whose presence for which we are grateful. So on behalf of these members of our church and our community, I want to thank you in advance for your support. Finally, in closing, I also want to say that while we appreciate and understand the A&amp;A's position, we respectfully disagree with their singular commitment to publicly oppose every residential and institutional rezoning. Such a stance can create antagonism, where partnership is institutionally preferred and productive. We believe that the proposal before you should be acceptable to all parties, because it both maintains the residential character of the neighborhood, and more importantly, as has been pointed out by the city planning board staff, gives greater control back to the neighborhood before any material changes can be made to the properties in question. Thank you again for your time and attention to this matter.
Alexander, would you please state for the record your acceptance of these new conditions?
Yes, we publicly accept these conditions that have been placed on this zoning request.
Thank you very much. Darren Rhodes?
Hello, my name is Darren Rhodes. I reside at 1031 Miller Street, which is across from the two houses that are in the petition. I'd like for these comments tonight to be an amendment of my opposition to this zoning petition, which I gave at the Board of Adjustment meeting in December, maybe in October. My family and I have lived at this residence, this location for 20 years. During that time, although we don't attend the church and my children don't attend the school, we've always felt welcome by the church, and my kids have virtually grown up on their playgrounds. And the green space that's provided by the church and, you know, the other spaces have been a welcome place for my children and my family over the years as well. Did have some concern when the petition was initially brought up. The church has been very receptive and open to hearing comments from the community, from the neighborhood. I feel confident that they have addressed those concerns, and I feel confident that the historical character, which attracted my family to the neighborhood, that the traffic patterns, that the change in use in general will be protected, possibly more than they were protected previously. And so with that being said, I'd like to say that I support this petition.
Thank you very much. Paul Fadishon?
Paul Fadishon with MLA Design Group, 6514 Doornock Drive, Greensboro, North Carolina, 27410. I am here on behalf of Redeemer Presbyterian Church. We are the landscape architects that have put together the site plan for the church that you've seen before you. We've been working with the church for a number of months now on this plan, and during that time, we have gone through two neighborhood meetings. I know that we have heard back comments from the neighborhood, comments from the Neighborhood Association, comments from Councilmember Bess, and along that way, as long as comments and conditions from planning staff. And along this last few months, we have tried to incorporate each of those comments and conditions into the site plan that you see before you today, and just wanted to reiterate some of the, not necessarily concessions, but that we've listened and incorporated some of these changes. We did add the original note that if these residential properties are sold in the future, that they would revert back to the RS zoning, and Mr. King and the Planning Department put that together. We have listened, and we are putting in signage for one-way circulation off of Miller Street, so that's as apparent that it can be, how the traffic circulates. We've done our best to minimize the impervious surface being added for this new connecting drive, and we're going to do our best as well to save every single tree that's on that site, even the poplar that was mentioned this past week or two. So we're trying to work with the neighborhood, listen to the comments, and incorporate those into the site plans. We added a couple of extra notes as well. We heard concerns about keeping the residential feeling for this neighborhood. We do have notes on the plans to keep the existing drives servicing the homes, so those will remain. And, let's see, of course, adding the note that driveway will not be used as a drop-off or pickup for the school. So I think Redeemer has been very receptive to the comments, and we've tried to incorporate everything that's been asked for. I don't think that we've left anything within their power to change out of the, out of the site plan. So if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer those. Otherwise, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for the proponents? All right, seeing no one, we'll go to the opponents. Robert Newman, I believe it is.
Hello, council. My name is Robert Newman. I live at 1341 Berwick Road, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27103, and I am the president of the Ardmore Neighborhood Association. Our stand on a rezoning request is the same regardless of the entity pursuing a change, which is to preserve the residential nature of Ardmore and prevent encroachment of the neighborhood. We enjoy positive relationships with many houses of worship in Ardmore, and we appreciate the support of businesses adjacent to the neighborhood, but per our mission, we must continue to oppose rezoning requests, which may pose a threat to the character of our community. We cannot afford to allow- Robert Newman, I believe it is.
Hello, council, my name is Robert Newman. I live at 1341 Berwick Road, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27103. And I am the president of the Ardmore Neighborhood Association. Our stand on a rezoning request is the same regardless of the entity pursuing a change, which is to preserve the residential nature of Ardmore and prevent encroachment of the neighborhood. We enjoy positive relationships with many houses of worship in Ardmore and we appreciate the support of businesses adjacent to the neighborhood, but per our mission, we must continue to oppose rezoning requests, which may pose a threat to the character of our community. We cannot afford to allow any entity to impede on our neighborhood and change its identity from anything different than residential zoning without our voice being heard and our opposition being seen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Julie Magnus.
Hello, my name is Julie Magnus, 630 Fenimore Street. I want to thank Redeemer and Rob Alexander for their willingness to work with the neighborhood. However, what cannot be ignored is that Redeemer has long outgrown their space. They've established institutional creep that erodes residential housing stock and lifestyle and this plan, while filled with what they see as concessions to work with the neighborhood, only attempt to mitigate the damages of residential living already done. Perhaps my significant note is despite multiple neighborhood concerns about the potential school drop off and pickup loop that this site could potentially provide, planning board meeting, the January city council meeting, the January 16th neighborhood meeting, it was still last minute this morning that it was included in this plan that it would not be used in such a manner. And that's a lot of trips per day that might have been pulled up to Miller Street that just this morning were added to the plan. Institutions do not have people that know their neighbors' daily habits, so they might not recognize a neighbor in need at night. They're not talking over the back fence about how their garden is doing because they have institutionalized the adjacent backyards. Institutions bring traffic, parking congestion, lighting and crime to their properties. They bring these issues to the yards and sidewalks where neighborhoods hope their children can be safe. I need to point out that Redeemer is trying to look like a great neighbor, which they are in many ways, by making concessions to their original plan to mitigate damages they've already created in the neighborhood. At the first city council meeting, I brought up the unintended consequence of illicit activities that church parking lots harbor. As the, at the January 16th neighborhood meeting with city officials, Rob Alexander and the neighborhood, Mr. Alexander admitted that there is a crime log at Redeemer and the friendly Winston-Salem Police Department that did reports at the church parking lot across the street from me now do reports in the church parking lot at Redeemer. Also shared that while the police are doing their part to discourage this crime location, the church has not so much as installed a live camera. Live camera and non-neighborhood type lighting is what has drastically cut out the crime in the church parking lot across the street from me. This driveway loop now will provide an in and out where people can easily perform their illicit activities because they're in one side down at one end of the block and the other side at the end of the block. It's going to be very hard for anybody to identify the vehicles or people that might be involved. And I will repeat what used to happen across the street from me before the live cameras and the increased lighting, gunshots, illegal fireworks, cars ripping in and out. There was a lot of stuff going on back there. We didn't have a way to really report it because we couldn't see to be able to say who it was. The police could have wasted a lot of time driving around. They were aware of it, they parked out in the parking lot and they did their reports. Despite the plan additions Redeemer is making, the bottom line is that they've already made a solid institutional encroachment, even splitting Hawthorne into the Hawthorne block. And the zoning this plan allows condones further institutional destruction of the residential quality of life. There is not residential quality of life at the end of the day when the business institutional use has gone home. This plan protects the appearance of the neighborhood and that's great, but there's still empty houses at the end of the night and this plan smacks of announcing to other institutions that it is just fine to take over homes and ask for forgiveness later. A vote for this plan is a vote against existing and quiet, popular, excuse me, and popular quality residential housing. A vote for this plan adds nothing to the neighborhood. I just want to note that while it appears to protect the appearance of the neighborhood, the negative impacts of institutional encroachment in a neighborhood are not what adds to the value of a neighborhood. When I bought in Ardmore in 1992, the tax value under my home was $11,000, $12,000. Tax value under my home is now $95,000, just the property that I have to pay taxes on under my house. I still have leaves sitting out in front of my house at the beginning of February. We need to sit and think about what we are doing to tax value and how much we're taking off the tax value rolls when we allow institutional creep into our neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Yes, Councilmember, a question.
Would you repeat that tax value again?
What, my current tax value?
Yeah, what you said, yes.
My current tax value under my house is $95,000.
And you said something about?
It's $12,000 when I purchased my home.
And that was in 1992?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Thank you very much. The proponents, you would have three minutes for rebuttal if you want to add anything.
Thank you. Just one or two minor comments in rebuttal. First, I think it's been the church's position all along that this drive area is not being used currently for a drop off or pickup of the Redeemer School. And I think that they've made that clear during the last meeting, that that would not be the case as well. It was a recommendation that this note be placed on the plan before this meeting to both strengthen the church's position and also put it in black and white so that it's undeniably there. That was not the intent of the church and so they're fine with having that note on the plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, Julie, do you have any comments on rebuttal?
I appreciate the intent, but if that was the intent, it could have been put in the plan immediately because it has been brought up at every meeting that that has been a concern. That should have been the first thing that was added to this plan. Yet the Ardmore Neighborhood Association has fought for a long time to prevent against institutional creep. We established a national historic district. Establishing the national historic district would not have been possible if institutional creep had been allowed to erode all the edges of Ardmore. It's the reason we're all paying really high tax value right now and we'd like to protect the residential quality that we had, that we've worked so hard for, that has resulted in those really high tax values that we pay for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will, hold on, one question for, Ms. Magnus, we have, Councilmember Sepia, I had a quick question.
Ms. Magnus, I'm just slightly confused. You mentioned that illegal activity was happening at a church in front of you. Is it Redeemer Church or is it somewhere else?
I live across the street from a different church. Actions that that church has taken, such as live camera feed, actually has caught the city of Winston-Salem dumpster dumping on their live camera feed at three o'clock in the morning. They've put additional lighting back there and it has helped reduce the crime that was going on in that parking lot. However, it was shared at the meeting with Redeemer that they actually have the police now in their parking lot doing reports because they have high crime. They do not have live cameras back there. They do not have the additional lighting protection. And now, exactly as the church that was across the street from me, they're opening up a driveway where you can come in one side, go out the other, and it's going to be hard to know who it was that came and went because they've come before the disruptive activity happened.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and recognize Councilwoman Bessie for a motion if she's ready.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a motion and then I'd like to comment. I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item and, two, W 3425 with the site plan revisions and additional conditions agreed to by petitioner.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Second, thank you. All right, go ahead, Councilwoman Bessie.
Thank you. First, I want to thank everyone who participated in this process, Redeemer's representatives, representatives of the neighborhood and staff. When we continued the case for one month in order to see if we could address some substantive issues that were raised during the previous hearing, folks were willing to give their time and work on that and come together, discuss those. We took the concepts that came out of that meeting and got them written into legal planning language, checked it with our various staff members and with our attorney's office, confirmed that it would do what it said it would do and would hold up legally. And those are the conditions that were presented this morning. If there was a delay in the public distribution of any particular item, such as the condition that Ms. Magnus referenced regarding not, explicitly not being allowed for a school drop off and pickup use, that was just a part of the getting it written down and vetted through everybody process as opposed to it not being put into the mix after that January meeting. I would like to correct a little bit of Ardmore history that's relevant here. Institutional use of this property is a part of historic Ardmore. It was originally Ardmore Elementary School and so it was institutionalized use when the neighborhood became a historic area and is recognized as such in contributing properties. It continues to have a school use on part of the property and a church use on another part of the property. Their footprint, to the best of my knowledge, has not expanded in a significant fashion since that time. The purchase of these two houses that are already in the church's ownership and in use for office uses in one case, meetings, and in the other case as a guest house for the church, have been going on legally under existing zoning for some time. So that actual use of those properties does not change either. What you have now, if this is approved, is strengthened protections for the continued existence of those homes in their current historic form on those sites. What we do not have in current law is a prohibition against knocking down such buildings. You can't replace them with anything but residential, but you can certainly replace them with a structure that is not in keeping with historic character of the area and does not have those historic buildings themselves in any way. With this additional condition, we will have that protection, the neighborhood will have that protection. And finally, the traffic, safety and flow on the site will be improved, I think notably, particularly on Sunday morning and evening church uses. When the side lot, which exists now, has an exit out the back onto Melrose Street through the back churching, the back parking lot now, they won't be coming out onto Miller Street en masse after services on Sunday morning or after an evening church event. Instead, it will be safer use. There are all sorts of bells and whistles that have been put now in the site plan and the conditions. One-way only, signage, markings, the very nature of the parking in that side lot, which will be diagonal facing toward the back, all will militate toward going in and not out on Miller Street. So in my analysis, this is an excellent example of cooperation. This helps this particular institutional use to remain a good neighbor and I support it and I ask that you do so as well.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Larson.
My experience with preservation in the city has observed on numerous occasions where institutions such as churches have taken on adjacent residential property and it's resulted in the demolition of those properties. And there's very little that has been able to stop that. In this particular case, not only do we have an organization that has early in the preservation effort of Ardmore, taken on a building, I think, that was subject to demolition and change and actually redeemed that, Redeemer Church, and made it a functional part of the community, which I applaud that effort on the part of the church and thank you for saving that building and adaptively reusing it. And now what we're going on is a next level and that is that institution surviving without adversely impacting the character of the neighborhood. And I think this is, this compromise that has been reached, which guarantees that these two houses, in fact, actually three buildings, that are on the site plan are preserved in perpetuity as contributing elements in that historic district is worthy of note. We live in a less than perfect world and you can't have everything all the time, but at the bottom, at the end of the day, when you drive by this site, the church will remain, the old schoolroom will remain and the houses that were adjacent to it will remain and we have a viable institution to support it. As a preservationist, I find that totally acceptable.
Thank you. All those opposed to the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And this rezoning is passed unanimously. Thank you, Councilwoman Bessie. Item Z three.
Item Z three, public hearing was on a petition of Kaheh Ahmad Najali from HBS to GBL. Property is located on the east side of Indiana Avenue, south of Perimeter Point Boulevard, located in the north ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? The petitioner is here for any questions. Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed and I recognize Councilmember Adams if she's ready for a motion or any need of staff report.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I move for the approval of, one, a statement of consistency for approval of this item and, two, W 3429.
Second. Second. Second, and Councilwoman Adams.
Yes, just wanted to let the owner know that one of the things that I did see that, you know, and he or she, they're not the only ones, sometimes you don't go far enough to get the community to a meeting and not that it's mandatory, but it helps to build relationships in the community. And I think from what I read, this, the meeting they had was back in either 2014 or 2000, Aaron?
It looks like it was 2000.
In 2000. And the community has really changed in a decade. So the good thing is it's commercial and it's just going to be more commercial. And those that have come down Indiana has noted over the years that Indiana is basically commercial. But the one thing that makes this a good thing is again, when people want to expand their businesses and not intrude in residential if they don't have to, and that it will give the city some tax base and they're not asking for anything. So with that, I move for approval.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Adams. Councilwoman Burke?
Yes, today I, let me pull this up a little bit. I had a conversation with Mr., with city manager and also Mr. King and I asked the Cal to follow our rec, to look at our records real careful to see had any of the developers talked with me. Some years ago, I did say to the city county planning board that when things that happen adjacent to each councillor's ward, then protocol should be understood. And I'm very pleased that I was able to talk with Mr. Jackson Smith. Are any of them here today, tonight?
Petitioner's here, yes.
Oh, yeah. Okay. But both of these are adjacent to the northeast ward and I wanted them to understand that when wards are so close to each other, that the councillor person and even some of the neighbors so close should be given consideration and respect. And Mr. King assured me that that would be understood and they had already made it clear that they should contact the elected official adjacent to the area.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Do we have a motion? Second, all those opposed to the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And motion passes unanimously. Item Z four.
Item Z four, public hearing was on a petition of Dayton Hudson Corporation from HBS to HBS. Property is located on the west side of University Parkway, south of Laura Avenue, located in the north ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Again, the petitioner's here. You're opposed? All right, we'll have a public hearing then. So for the proponents. So for the proponents, Paul Fedischen, again, Fedischen, if you'd like to come forward to make a presentation, or whomever.
Councilmembers, thank you again.
State your name and address again, please.
Certainly, Paul Fedischen with MLA Design Group. We are the landscape architects. Our address is 6514 Doranok Drive, Greensboro, North Carolina, 27410. This is a project that our firm is working on with Aston Properties. We'll be purchasing this property. It's out in the front of a Target shopping center, and the entire project area is within an existing parking lot. The property that they are looking at, this half parcel, is in between the Target and University Parkway. This infill project will build another use of retail space and restaurant space of approximately 6,000 square feet. We are building within the existing parking area. Once construction, post-construction is complete, we will actually be reducing the amount of impervious surface area within that area. Right now, the Target shopping center, the parking lot, is not being used, so this will be a good reuse of that property. All of the existing drives leading into the shopping center are going to remain circulation within the shopping center itself, remains as well. I think there's two entrances off of University Parkway. Those will be utilized just like they are now. The front of the building is facing towards university. We think it'll be a nice addition. Of course, all of the ordinance requirements are going to be met in the end. That should result in additional trees, additional shrubs within this area. So we'll green up the space. This rezoning request, property is currently zoned HBS. We are, again, asking for HBS, but for some additional uses, such as a restaurant with a drive-through, which is allowed under HB zoning. The petitioner has agreed to remove fuel services from the existing use, so we are taking that off, and that's a use that's currently allowed now. If you do have any questions?
All right, thank you. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone else for the proponents?
Good evening. My name is Jackson Smith. I'm with Aston Properties. My address is 610 East Morehead Street, Suite 100, Charlotte, North Carolina, 28202. I'm just here. Paul pretty much said everything, but I just wanted to reiterate that we're excited about this project. We've got a couple of tenants, national tenants, first-class tenants, that are very interested, and we've been working with for a while up in this area, very interested in serving this market. They're not there today. They'll bring services that everyone will be excited about. It is a one-story building, two tenants, as Paul said, just under 6,000 square feet, 55,000 parks. It is a, I just wanted to clarify, it is a drive-through, but it's technically not a drive-through that you think of at McDonald's and some of the other major fast-food restaurants. On one end cap will be a fast casual restaurant, as they call it, and it will be a pickup window, where people order online, pay online, and they come through and pick up if they're going to the store. Beyond that, I just wanted to introduce myself and thank you all for your consideration, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, for the proponents, Mr. Knott?
Hello, my name is Will Knott. I live at 2290 Sally's Lane. That's in the north ward, and I'm about, I'm several miles from this location, but I use Shattillon and University on a regular, two to four times a day. Presently, there is a traffic count of 30, excuse me, 35,000 average per day. That's well below the capacity of 49,000. But this increase would be, take the Target daily flow from 5211 up to 6531, which is a 25% increase on these two existing drives that were spoken of, which exit onto University, both north and south. This addition to the Target lot will impact the intersection of University and Shattillon and University and, the road's name is Target, there are stoplights at both of these. These are both heavily-used intersection, stoplights, with Shattillon intersection being the major one, as the other one sort of feeds to it. Presently, the northbound traffic, basically at the 5:00 traffic time, is interrupted by left lane on the northbound, is interrupted by cars trying to get into the left turn lane to get onto Shattillon. And then the next cycle, the northbound left lane is interrupted because the queuing, turning from left onto Shattillon interrupts that lane. So it's sort of a back and forth. The result of this is it pushes traffic on northbound University back into the intersection of Target and University, and clogs that stoplight because people don't yield and stay out of a stop, out of an intersection. So then, when the people, the cars are pulling out of the Target Road, and they pull into northbound University, they can't get there because of the overrun, I don't know the proper term, but just the backup. And so then, they're out in the middle of the street, so when the light changes at University and Target, the northbound can't move forward or get entangled with them because that road's blocked up. This also affects the southbound, which is trying to get through that line of traffic that has come off a Target lane. This is also an intersection, the Shattillon and, Shattillon and University intersection right now has a U-turn, allowable U-turn. If you add this new building with the restaurant in it, it will increase the number of U-turns at that intersection, and that slows down the other cars trying to turn left. These U-turn cars also have to yield to the right turn cars coming off of Shattillon. Just south of this, we have Cherry Street, which dumps into north University, and can't get in because the stoplights back traffic up beyond that, halfway up towards the Walmart. And so the people on Cherry that are trying to enter northbound University have trouble getting in. Those that are trying to get from Cherry across these two lanes and go south on University can't get through, and they're having to yield to the people on southbound University trying to get onto Cherry, and neither can flow because of the backed-up traffic unless there happens to be somebody nice enough to let them through. You have, you have the Walmart I mentioned, that's on the south, that's on the south, in, southbound University. You have a well-used CVS, a well-used Walgreens. You've got extremely well-used Speedway. They have some of the best prices in town, so people come all over. You have to wait to get a pump right there. Also at that intersection is where Speedway has their tankers that come onto University. If you were at the Shattillon University stoplight and turn to the left, you've got a fire station, which when there's an issue with them, I've seen them have to cross the median to get around all the blocked-up traffic, and cars are trying to get out of the way, but there's nowhere to go. You also have a bus transfer station a quarter mile up from that intersection. You've got two parks, one a quarter mile, this is still all just eastbound, westbound Shattillon. You've got to park a quarter mile, yet you've got to park a half mile. You've got North High School that is about a half mile, so you've got buses and student traffic. You've got a private elementary that's outside that two-mile area, but they have no bus service, so you've got kids being brought to school and away from school at those change of hours. You've got a, quite a few apartment buildings down east, down west Shattillon. Going to the north on University, you've got, you've got, where's my list here? You've got banks, car sales places, you've got, you've got office buildings, you've got restaurants, you've got Lowe's hardware just across the highway that brings a lot of traffic up this way. You've got a movie theater, you've got, you've got a medical place up that way, and a hotel. If you were to go west on Shattillon, that's mostly residential, except for the Vulcan Quarry, which there you have heavy trucks bringing stone, and the trucks are coming in and out, they're taking stone out. That's also a borrow pit for where grading contractors can get clean, dry dirt when you can't get it elsewhere. And if you go on the south side of those intersections, you've got three car washes. Two are the type of car wash that also has gas, and for three car washes to be down there tells you a whole lot about the amount of traffic that's on University. You've also got Walmart and several other businesses. It takes me, during the rush hour, it takes me four to five cycles to get up through the Target University stoplights, and another two cycles to get up to University Shattillon, where I take a left. And I failed to mention, but there is a southbound University, there is a U-turn only there at the Target University stoplight, so they're trying to cycle back through all that traffic that's all backed up. You've got, you've got a very dangerous road on University in that it feeds a lot of traffic that's going towards the north, headed towards 52 North, and coming off of 52 onto southbound University, and that's going both ways. But last week, there was an accident on north University that snarled traffic for quite a while. You pretty much, there's no way around it unless you happen to know the sneak-through there at Methebra Park Boulevard. And about three years ago, there was a fella killed coming out of Cherry Street, trying to cross all that traffic and turn north, and he, he got hit. Gosh, that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knott. Thank you. Anyone else for opposition? All right, that would, proponents would have three minutes for any rebuttal you'd like to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, no.
Thank you again. We did not hire a traffic engineer. TIA was not required for this site. Planning Department did provide the numbers of daily trips, and I just want to note that for the proposed uses, there, it's going to generate an extra 1,190 trips a day, which is well below the 14,000 additional trips that this road can carry. So I'm not an expert in that area, I just wanted to relay what's in the report, and Mr. King hopefully can clarify that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a rebuttal? I thank you. Mr. Knott, did you want to add anything for a rebuttal?
And I'd like to thank you all for listening to me go through all that stuff. I think he just mentioned 1,100 additional. It's really, according to the information provided, that it's about 1,300. And yes, this, all this traffic is below the capacity, but I also would question the capacity, given the current situation. There are a few ways it could be improved, and of course, that's somebody that doesn't know anything but sees some empty uses along that road. There are some possibilities, I don't know how much it would help. In flying the world, with all that going on, wouldn't you have a traffic study? You've got 35,000 cars going right in front of this building, and no traffic study. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll declare the public hearing closed, and that's what Mr. King to give reported to the planning board.
All right, thank you. I think everybody's probably pretty familiar with the site. It's a little over an acre on the west side of University, right in the Target parking lot. You can see it there in yellow on the map, and there's an aerial image. As mentioned earlier, it's basically just additional parking for the Target store currently. Some images, looking again at the parking lot on site, looking back at the Target store, and then across University Parkway from the site. This is the North Suburban Area Plan update, and it does recommend commercial for the subject property, so the request is in keeping with that recommendation. And this is the site plan that was submitted with this request. Again, it's for about a 6,000-square-foot retail building. University Parkway would be towards the bottom of this image, the Target would be back towards the north in this image. Important thing here is there are no new driveway cuts proposed with this. It's using the existing driveway cuts there, so no new cuts onto University Parkway. Again, the building's located to the rear of the site, the parking is in front and to the side on the site plan, and these are the elevations that were submitted with the request. This would be similar to what you would see if you were looking at the site from University Parkway. These are the elevations provided. So in summary, the request is consistent with recommendations of legacy and the area plan. It's a, it's a commercial opportunity, infill, commercial infill opportunity. These are the things we've been promoting in our area plans for a while, and we've seen some of these requests along Peters Creek Parkway, we've seen some on Haynes Mall Boulevard, where folks have come in and taken additional parking and infilled it with additional retail opportunities. It's already zoned commercial. As mentioned earlier, it will place additional traffic on University Parkway. The request did go to the planning board at their January meeting. There were two speakers in support and one in opposition, and some of the concerns raised at that meeting were, again, the traffic on University Parkway, the functionality of that intersection at Shattillon Drive, and there were some impacts to Leek Fort Creek that were also mentioned by one of the speakers. After hearing that, the planning board just voted 8 to 0 to recommend approval of this request. And Jeff Fanzler is in attendance tonight. If there are additional questions about some of the traffic information you've heard, we can bring Jeff up and provide additional clarification if that's needed.
Any questions for Mr. King? For Larson?
This is a site plan modification, is that what this is?
It's a rezoning technically, because we're adding new uses and we're also modifying the site plan, so it's a rezoning.
And in that process, we don't require a traffic study at all?
Not for this, because the number of trips generated in the peak hour did not meet the threshold required to require a TIS.
I think, I think my biggest concern is familiarity with Haynes Mall Boulevard and Stratford Road. and Stratford Road, uh, whether we build in conditions as we continue to improve density on, on commercial operations, but the threshold seems to be well within those guidelines.
So, so if you look at this and if Jeff comes up, I think what he can speak to is when the Target itself went in, there's dual left turn lanes going into the site and a dedicated right turn, or right turn lane that gets you into the site in addition to the dedicated signal that gets you in and out of Target. So when the Target went in, a lot of those heavy traffic improvements were installed at that time. Based on what is, there's really nothing else that the developer can do to mitigate those traffic impacts with this request. And I think what, what Jeff can speak to is really is the nature of having four stoplights in such close proximity at Cherry, Target, Shattillon and Haynes Mill Road that's kind of causing some of these stacking and jamming and functionality issues on the broader University Parkway.
Thank you. Counselor Adams, uh, recognize her.
Thank you. Um, members, I'm going to make the motion in the comments. I move for approval of one, the statement of consistency for the approval of the plan. And two, I'm going to give you three, four, three, one.
Thank you.
Motion second. Go ahead, Counselor Adams.
Um, again, uh, I thank, uh, the business for coming and I guess like most of us, the world is growing and the population's growing and everybody's got a car. And I don't care whether it's Peters Creek, whether it's Martin Luther King, whether it's, you know, Wartown, whether it's Stratford Road, Hawthorne, it, it is where we live. It is the way it is. And, and again, until we all can disconnect and maybe figure out whether the federal government, the state, and all of us are going to recognize that in order for us to move forward, to take people off the road, we gotta provide the transportation for where people want to go and to get them back to their home. That's something you can think about. Of course, there's increased traffic. Again, I remember when none of that was there. I've lived on that side of town right at University since nineteen seventy-four or five. I remember when the University Plaza was bought, built. I remember there used to be a Darrell's where the car wash is, it's no longer in place on University and it had a bus inside of it. I remember when there was nothing on University, no apartments, no Walmart, no, used to be a Kroger, closed down for years. I remember all the way up University, there was nothing until the mayor, Pro Tim, and them did the revitalization of that area and put the big Walmart up there. There were no, uh, what's the drive-in with the hamburgers that everybody likes to go through. I, I, there was none of that. Now, if you get on University Parkway, when, once you pass Wake Forest University, I remember when the First Assembly Church wasn't there. All of this is because of progress in the way communities work and where people want to live, work, eat and enjoy a quality of life. Everybody saw, including me especially, because I travel University all the time, the increased traffic as soon as Business Forty went into work mode to reconstruct. University Parkway again began to be like Martin Luther King and downtown and all of that. Not saying that it never had the traffic, but oh my gosh, it just tripled. It just seemed to just blow up. And yes, we have traffic lights at Home Road with Arbor Parkway, all the way to the, the Target there at Shattillon, all the way up to the other hotels and every, it's like stop and stack all the way down University Parkway. Uh, Mr. King, uh, and Jeff and you guys, I would like you to get with DOT and PAT and the departments. And I'd like to see what we can do, uh, now that Business Forty's back up, that we can move that traffic better through that area, whether we have to put in some other mechanisms, that there are no U-turns like we've seen, but people just can't stop and wait to do a U-turn to come back because it, it is kind of hectic there. Another good thing about this project is it's less impervious space being used, uh, surface. Uh, when the Target was built in nineteen ninety-five, again, I remember that. That parking lot was, the idea was that there was going to be some retail or something there. And now again, we're lucky to see some without any investment from the city. Again, I need folks and I know it's hard to be wrapping your mind around, where are we going to get the tax base to better the services and to make life better for all of us here in Winston? And that's one of it. Uh, again, uh, I would just say, mayor, members of the council and the public, it, it's got a lot to do with everybody if one person is driving a car. That's the way it is. When you get on University after the morning rush and it really got hectic with Business Forty, I know this because I travel it all hours of the day. And already today, I've seen a decrease in traffic throughout the city of Winston-Salem since Forty opened up, and that's the truth. So, that was the end of my comments.
All right, Counselor Burke.
Yes, thank you. I said to Mr. Jackson Smith today, I do appreciate our conversation and you following through. But we are a progressive city now. And if we are to provide opportunities for the citizens in this city, then we are to grow. I'm just excited when we once had the CIAA or when we had the Black Festival or when Wake Forest or Winston-Salem State Salem College may brought something into this city that created a move in transportation. And I like going downtown. I like going in that hustle and bustle. And I say to citizens who come and observe certain things, you're not being ignored. We know that we have residents, but in order to generate the kind of revenue that we need in this city, we can't stand still. When individuals complained about what was happening, they couldn't get this place or that place. I said, you know, in order to make something good, you got to tear it up first. So we have shown them with the improvements that we have downtown. In fact, someone asked me, had I gotten on the new, uh, expressway? I said, us senior citizens have to decide when we're going to get on it. I said, and maybe sometimes we have to get on when everybody's asleep.
That's right.
Because these drivers drive so fast, they don't allow us to drive our cars with the right speed. But when I see it, I would hope that citizens would feel like I feel. It's showing that your city, with the city manager and the staff who's out there working, the mayor and the council people who are out there working, that we're progressive. And we're saying the people come to our city. We want you here. And so when we have traffic, like somebody say, get with it, if you can't get with it, stay home. And I told somebody what I was going to have to do, get somebody to drive me on this fast expressway because I do want to get on it. I do want to get on it. So the people who come here and bring their business, it helps us to generate what we need, jobs and opportunities. And if you look at my record, I have never denied a business person, whether we were given, uh, something or not. So I say thank you. And, uh, I know you're very happy, Councilwoman, that it is in your area and that we're seeing these improvements.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All those opposed, the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That is unanimous. Thank you, Counselor Adams. Item Z five.
Item Z five, Public hearing on resolution confirming assessment role for demolition of housing unfit for human habitation recommended by Finance Committee.
Is there anyone in the council chamber who would like to be heard on this proposed, um, demolition assessment role? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and recognize Counselor Clark.
I'll move approval.
Second. Motion second, end of discussion. All those opposed, the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item Z six.
Item Z six, mayor joins recommendation for appointments to the downtown Winston-Salem Business District Advisory Committee. Kelly J. Brown, Hotel Representative, term expiring June twenty-twenty-one. Shannon Meyer, Real Estate Developer, term expiring June twenty-twenty-two.
Your motion?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion second, discussion. All those opposed, the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That's unanimous. Thank you. Z seven.
Item Z seven, mayor joins recommendation for appointment to the Public Assembly Facilities Commission. Vicki S. Miller, term expiring August twenty-twenty-one.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion second, discussion. All those opposed, the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That is unanimous. Would just say that, uh, Ms. Miller is taking the term of, uh, her husband Ward, who was unfortunately killed in a tragic traffic accident. So we're glad to have Ms. Miller on there for sure. Item Z eight.
Item Z eight, mayor joins recommendation for appointment to the Recreation and Park Commission. Joseph A. Cassidy, term expiring May twenty-twenty-one.
Your motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All those opposed, the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Z nine.
Item Z nine, mayor joins recommendation for appointment to the African American Heritage Action Initiative Committee. William F. Fulton, term expiring August twenty-twenty-two.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second, discussion. All those opposed, the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That's unanimous. Thank you. Uh, Z ten.
Item Z ten, mayor joins recommendation for appointment to the Citizens Budget Advisory Council. Ross A. Griffith, term expiring February twenty-twenty-three.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those opposed, the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That's unanimous. Thank you. Z eleven.
Item Z eleven, mayor joins recommendation for appointments to the MWBE Advisory Committee. Cassandra W. Brunson, term expiring February twenty-twenty-two.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All those opposed, the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That's unanimous. Thank you. Z twelve.
Item Z twelve, mayor joins recommendation for appointment to the Police Officers Retirement Commission. Tina A. Flowers, Chair, term expiring February twenty-twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second. Thank you. Discussion. All those opposed, the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That's unanimous. Thank you. Z thirteen.
Item Z thirteen, mayor joins recommendation for reappointments to the Affordable Housing Coalition. John Lauder, Derwin L. Montgomery, Paul Norby, Tom Williams, all terms expiring February twenty-twenty-three.
Move approval.
Second. Motion second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say a, vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. That's unanimous. Z fourteen.
Item Z fourteen, mayor joins recommendation for reappointments to the Public Arts Commission. Adaya S. Bell, Janie B. Wilson, Bessie J. Towns and David Finn, all term expiring December twenty-twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second, discussion. All those opposed, the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Sorry we brought so many at one time there, a little backlog. Uh, Counselor Bessie.
Yes, very quickly, um, someone during the meeting did raise the magic word leaves, which often comes up about this time of year. Just so, who, folks who are asking the question, will the leaves in your neighborhood ever be picked up? The answer is probably yes, uh, because the third round is running late this year. Usually we try to finish that up by the end of January. It is still going on and looks like it's going to take a, a great deal of February. Uh, but if you want to know specifically when the estimated time for them to get to your neighborhood is, go to the city website, go to sanitation, then go to leaf collection. Uh, the, the finder will put in your address, uh, and the finder will tell you when the estimated time for your area is.
Good. Thank you, Counselor Bessie. Counselor Burke.
I just need to make a motion. We did get information about the bulky pickup and sometimes some of the citizens think that we're getting to them too early, but we alternate. Would you explain that a little bit, City Manager?
Thank you, ma'am. You talking about bulky item collection?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Bruntenberg. I think the, the mailings just now started going out notifying citizens and on the postcards when, when their time is. We do rotate neighborhoods and when we collect each year. Uh, so sometimes you may be earlier than, sometimes you may be later, but we will collect from everybody.
And I told them we were being fair.
Yes, ma'am.
That we do it, it's not just you early, we go to other places early. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. I entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. All those favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, no. We adjourn.